All right. Good morning. Welcome to the September 12th, 2024 Planning and Zoning Commission. Call this meeting to order at 9:31. Rosalie, let me take a roll call.
Commissioner Arnett. Commissioner Curly.
Here.
Commissioner Dan Zeison.
Here.
Commissioner. Thank you. Commissioner Landau. Commissioner Lawrence. Commissioner Montoya.
Here.
Commissioner Swart.
Here.
Commissioner Schlosser.
Here.
Vice Chair Lindblum.
Here.
Chairman Hernandez.
Here.
Chairman, we have a quorum.
Great. Thank you, Rosalie. See, time for announcements. This meeting has been noticed in accordance with open meeting law, ARS 38-431. Agendas are available within 24 hours of each meeting in the Maricopa County Planning and Development Office, and are also available on the Planning and Development website one week prior to hearing at www.mericopa.gov/planing. The staff reports prepared for each agenda item shall become a part of the permanent record for each case. With respect to hearing process, cases will be considered in the order they appear on the agenda unless otherwise agreed to by the commission. For each case, the applicant will be given a set amount of time to present. Anyone wishing to speak on a particular case shall fill out a speaker's card for in-person attendance, or raise your hand within go-to webinar. The amount of time allowed for speaking shall be at the discretion of the commission chair. Staff will provide the chairman with the names of persons who have registered and noted desire to comment, and those registered participants who have raised their hand. The chairman will call on each name participant one at a time. The chairman will conduct the hybrid in-person and virtual public hearing according to the bylaws and according to the rules established by the chairman regarding public comment. Votes will be done by roll call vote only. The chairman will verbally identify the specific members responsible for all motions and seconds. See, staff has circulated the minutes from the July 25th hearing. Are there any comments from the commission? All right. Hearing no comments, the minutes are approved. We will move on to the consent agenda. Is there anybody in the public or online that wishes to speak about any items on the consent agenda? David, do we have anybody with hands raised or anybody on go-to webinar?
We're not aware of anyone.
Okay, great.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Has case number six been moved to the regular agenda?
Yes, number six is on the regular agenda now.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Darren.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, commissioners, real quickly, agenda item one is continued indefinitely. So no actions required of the commission. And then remaining on the consent, we have items two, three, four, five, seven, eight, and nine, I believe, and those, I'll run through those quickly. Items two and three, DMP 2020 001 is Z 2020 085, known as Global Water Hacioma Utilities Water Reclamation Facility Number Two in District Four. This is an amendment to the Hidden Waters Ranch DMP land use map to change the site to utilities, as well as a zone change to industrial two IUPD under the Z case for 28.7 acres northwest of Buckeye and 343rd Avenue in the Tonopah area. There is a handout with two letters that are somewhat dated but indicating concerns over odors and mosquitoes. The recommendations, however, in paragraph 24 is for approval of the DMP amendment, and in paragraph 25 is for approval of the zoning subject to conditions A through X. Agenda item four is Z 2023 061, known as TWC Warner Road Mesa, District One. It's a zone change to industrial three IUPD for a nine and a half acre site on the north side of Warner between Sausman and 80th Street in the East Mesa area. The proposal is for manufacturing uses. There's no known opposition. The recommendation in paragraph 13 is for approval of subject to conditions A through G. The next case is Z 2023 136, known as Camping World in District Three. This is a zone change to C3 CUPD for three and a half acres east of the southeast corner of Black Canyon Highway and Circle Mountain Road north of Anthem. There's no known opposition. The recommendation in paragraph 11 is for approval, subject to conditions A through H. Agenda item seven is Z 2024 028, known as PHO Cello Crossing in District Four. The special use permit for a WCF in the rural 43 WHSC zoning district west of 211th Avenue and Grand Avenue in the Whitman area on a lease site just under 6,900 square feet. The proposal is for an 80-foot monopole with multiple carriers. There is one letter of concern that was handed out today, concerned with property values for future marketability. The recommendation is for approval, subject conditions A through J in paragraph 20. The next case is Z 2024 048, known as 101 Incorporated Buckeye in District Five. This is a zone change to industrial two, located north at the northeast corner of Palo Verde Road and the Union Pacific Railroad in the Buckeye area. The Buckeye general plan designates the site for employment. There's no known opposition. The recommendation in paragraph 15 is for approval, subject to conditions A through J. Z 2024 003 is known as Appleby and Southern Pacific Railroad Industrial in District One. The zone change to industrial two for 16.6 acres at the southeast corner of Appleby and the railroad, which is north and east of the northeast corner of Northern of Arizona Avenue and Ocatillo Road. Chandler has their general plan and the airpark area plan that respectively designate the site for employment or industrial uses. There's no known opposition. The recommendation in paragraph 18 is for approval, subject to conditions A through K. I believe that concludes our consent agenda. I'm happy to try and answer any questions you may have.
Great. Thank you, Darren.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Commissioner Schlosser.
Yes, Commissioner Schlosser.
I've been out of pocket the last few days. Is item number 10 still on the regular agenda? I know there was two, two members of the public that had raised opposition a while back.
Yes, 10 is on the regular agenda.
Is there more opposition that came forward besides those initial two? That's the first question. The second question is, are those two individuals in the audience who are on webinar? Can we, if they're not, if there's no opposition, can we move case number 10 to the consent? Would be my question.
If David confirms, I don't believe we have anyone here in person or online to speak to this case.
Is there anybody in the audience for case number 10, Z 2024 034, the Roosevelt Logistics Center? David, do we have anybody online?
No one online is indicating a desire to speak on that case.
Commissioner Swart, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I just would tell you that I would second Commissioner Schlosser's recommendation.
Yeah, okay. I mean, if that's okay, can we move 10 to the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I got concurrence from council. That is Z 2024 034, known as Roosevelt Logistics Center in District Four. It's a zone change to industrial two IUPD for 162 acres of a 200-acre parcel west of the northwest corner of Roosevelt Street and 339th Avenue in Tonopah. It is designated industrial in the county's land use plans. There are three emails that have been received in opposition. The recommendations for approval. If you'll give me a minute. Approval subject to conditions A through L as outlined in paragraph 18.
Okay, great. So now we moved number 10 to consent.
Could I just ask one question on that? Do we know who the, is there a, who the developer is on that project? We do know who it is. Can we say who that is? Is it, is it public? I'm just trying to make sure there's not conflict for myself. If that, if that's okay.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, can, can you let us know?
Sorry, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, thank you for your records. Carolyn Oberholzer with Bergen Frakes Smalley and Oberholzer 4343 East Camelpeck in Phoenix. And yes, I'm here on behalf of Tratt Properties. Tratt Properties is the developer of the site.
Thank you, appreciate it.
All right, great. Okay, thank you, everybody. Moving on, is there any questions of the staff by the commission? All right, I think we've already addressed that there's nobody here from the public or online. So with that, we'll close the public forum. Is there any discussion from the commission regarding the consent agenda? All right, I will entertain a motion.
We'll approve.
All right, we have a motion to recommend approval of the consent agenda as presented by staff by Commissioner Lawrence.
Second.
Second.
All right, we got a second by Commissioner Montoya. Rosalie, ready for a roll call vote?
Commissioner Curly.
Yes.
Commissioner Dan Zeison.
Yeah.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Yes.
Commissioner Montoya.
Yes.
Commissioner Swart.
Yes.
Commissioner Schlosser.
Yes.
Vice Chair Lindblum.
Yes.
Chairman Hernandez.
Yes.
Chairman, we have a motion recommending approval of the consent agenda by a vote of eight to zero.
Great, thank you, Rosalie. All right, moving on to the regular agenda, we have case Z 2024 012. And Joel, ready to go?
Thank you. Chairman Hernandez, members of the commission, agenda item six for KC 2024 012. The reason request for C2, from C2 CUPD to IND to IUPD for the Seguro Best facility located southeast of Olive Avenue and Cotton Lane in District Four. Next slide. As stated in the handout memo, there has been some discussion around condition D2 relating to setbacks as required this item to be moved off of the consent agenda. In general, staff has promoted a 100-foot setback from lot lines and a 500-foot separation from residential buildings for battery units. These facilities in our jurisdiction have tended to be remote. The question is whether this subject site, immediately adjacent to moderate density residential, is more appropriate for community commercial zoning or general industrial zoning. The IUPD can limit entitled use of the property, but it seems there should be a comfort level with potential for best development proximate to housing. Rural Metro is the agency with authority for fire slash emergency response, and they have signed off on their zoning request. However, the site only has a 600-foot dimension, so it can meet the 100-foot setback, but a 500-foot separation from residential buildings would prevent any best location on the site. This site is a portion of a 38-acre site with approximately 27 of those acres remaining zones E2, which does not limit residential development occurring directly adjacent to the lot lines of this proposed facility. Next slide. It should be noted that the applicant has not proposed a planned development with this application, and what is in front of the commission today relates strictly to statutory zoning. Staff is recommending the commission adopt a motion recommending the board of supervisors approve this case under the setbacks as provided in the staff report, mandating a minimum of 500-foot separation from residential buildings, but the commission may consider proposing alternate conditions in line with the applicant's request. And at this time, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you, Joel. Is the applicant here?
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Court Rich, on behalf of the applicant, I'm with the Rose Law Group, 7144 East Stetson in Scottsdale. I do have a presentation, and I think it would make everyone's life easier if I have the clicker that I can work through it. Thank you. I want to start by thanking staff for their, their work on this. And while we have a recommendation of approval, as staff mentioned, we do have a question that we want to raise to the commission and seek your guidance, and hopefully your assent to modifying a condition. So let me take you through the proposal briefly. IPA Power, who is the applicant, is a very experienced developer. Battery energy storage obviously has not been around that long, but IPA has been doing it as long as anybody. They've got 77 different projects around the United States they're currently working on. I can show you a map that shows where these are. So Maricopa County and the residents and everyone in the area can feel very comfortable that they're getting the best of the best doing this project. So I want to talk about some of the benefits. First of all, we can't talk about this project and what change we're making without knowing what's there today. And I think we probably will all agree that what's out there today is basically not a very desirable use from a residential standpoint as far as neighbors are concerned. It's a, what I would describe as sort of an industrial use with a nursery, there's ponds, there's sort of construction equipment, there's dust, there's smells, there's bugs, all that stuff. And so we believe that replacing that with a standard battery energy storage use, which is as quiet and undisturbing as of a neighbor as you can find, is actually going to be a net benefit for the area. And that's a good time to mention that we have eight supporters that have signed on to a petition and no opposition in the area. So it's our, our feedback that we've got that others in the area agree that this would be the right use and the right, the right place. You know a lot about energy storage. I know you've had some cases previously, but I'll run through some more of the benefits generally. You know, economic development, this is an investment of hundreds of millions of dollars in our, in our state's infrastructure, and that has benefits of job creation during construction in particular. It then spins off taxes that'll do a lot to support local schools and special districts in the area, including the county. It's gonna, what's really important right now, and the reason why this is coming to you is that if you're a big energy user and you go to APS, for example, today and ask to interconnect to the grid, they say you can't, and that you're going to have to wait eight to 10 years. They need projects like this to keep our economy booming in the state. And so it increases grid reliability. It helps meet the needs for power that we have. If it speaks to you, it's important to note, battery energy storage is a clean technology. It allows us to implement more green solar and wind technologies. It stores that energy that's created during the middle of the day or at other times and can deploy it exactly when we need it. It doesn't use water. The clicker seems to have stopped on me. Oh, there we go. It's a quiet neighbor. I mentioned that. You've got no trucks, you've got no traffic, you've got no tractors, you've got no smells, no dust, none of that. And so we think it's a really good fit in the area. And we're most proud. We worked very closely with Rural Metro, and I'll talk some more about this. I know I talked to Commissioner Schlosser previously. I know he's got serious, some, some comments on this, as I think you all would expect as well, and I want to try to address those before we get to them. But Rural Metro, to be clear, wrote a letter of support. It's in the file. And they support the, the site plan that we proposed with the setbacks that we proposed and worked with them on at the time. Let me just show you the, take you through kind of the area and why we think this is compatible. Those are existing transmission lines in the area. There's a lot of electricity infrastructure there. You'll note, one of the, you know, why are we building this here in the first place? There's the substation right, right there. And so that's why, why this is the spot for this use. Also, part of the reason why we feel good about this location is the fire department's located like 700 feet away. That's the fire station. Obviously, you know, there's, there's the freeway, there's the spillway, and just generally, sorry, my clicker is, it's going slow. There's some billboards on the site already. There's, you know, future more intensive, intense uses that are to the, to the northwest, no doubt, and the freeway. So currently approved on the site, it's C2. And I think, you know, our position has been that this use is, is far less sort of likely to have any issue or impact or even be noticed by the neighbors than some of the stuff you can do there today. And I think this is why staff is supportive of us. But, you know, as of right on the site today, you can do a gas station, you can do propane sales, you can do a liquor store, boat sales, you know, drive-in restaurants, auto repairs, car washes, a lot of the stuff you can see there. You could do an electrical substation, and you could even have a wastewater treatment plant as of right on the site that's there today. So again, we think battery energy storage is a quiet use. Whoops, I skipped over. So we worked with, so why are we here? Why do we have this issue on the setbacks? So when we submitted our site plan, staff asked us to make an accommodation and asked us specifically to include the setbacks that we included in our application. And it wasn't until the staff report that there was any mention of a 500-foot setback from residential. And so I guess my appeal to you all is, is to help, you know, to look at that and take that into account as you're, put yourself in the shoes of the applicant who's been going through this process in good faith, working with staff, did exactly what they said. They asked us on the first re-submital to ensure there's at least 100-foot buffer between the industrial and the residential. We actually made it 173 feet. The standard is five feet, so we're many times greater than the standard. We believe that, that this is an acceptable use in this location. We believe it's safe. The fire department has looked at it, at the stipulation, I'm sorry, at the setbacks that we have proposed and has signed off on it. And so we're very hopeful, and we really ask your support in modifying the stipulation. I'll show you the language that we're suggesting. Here's just a quick overview of the site and shows you the 173-foot setback, the 15-foot landscape buffer, the wall that'll be built as well. And I want to, I just want to stress that having battery energy storage in proximity to residential uses is not at all unusual. You've approved some here in the state already, in Maricopa County, and then around the state. Here's a project in California that's actually built. There are several that are approved that I can take you through also. Here's one that, that was approved, not built yet. You can see right next to residential. Another example of one that was just approved in a neighboring state. And so, you know, this is, this is normal. And certainly, there's a history with battery energy storage, but the technology has advanced such that now, you know, we have the fire department saying that they support this project, supported in this location. They're comfortable with the technology. They understand how it works. And because I can anticipate some of the, the specific comments that I think might be coming, I do want to touch on some of the, the reasons why the fire department supports the project and just some of the facts around that. And, sorry, I'm having clicker problems here. So we work closely with the fire department. Again, the fire station is like 700 feet away. We're going to have 24/7 remote monitoring on the facility. We're going to do training specifically with the fire department on the technology before anything's built, before anything's turned on. We're in strict compliance with all the National Fire Protection Act requirements. We're designing the project to eliminate issues that you've seen in the past and that I think are motivating some of the comments that Commissioner Schlosser is familiar with. The technology is totally different. There, there are a number of changes that have been made that make this stuff safe and take away the, the issues that we've seen in the past. The, again, just with fire codes, we're going to be compliant with that. Our roadways have been designed, again, working with the fire department to make sure there's access, there's staging, there's everything you need. There's fire hydrants and all of those. And we're willing to, you know, in exchange for this stipulation, if, if the commission so chooses to enter into a stipulation that makes it ultimately clear that the fire department has the final say, and we don't get a project unless they sign off on our final design. That's something that this commission approved, I think, in the West Wing project, when, when they got approved. And so we're happy to, that's the language I pulled directly from, from that. And if, if it makes the commission comfortable, we're happy to, to adopt that language. And I have it at the end if you need to look at it. So, um, let me, one, one point I wanted to make, I know Commissioner Schlosser has told a story about, you know, what if your windows open in the middle of the night and there's a battery fire? And the air comes in, and what happens to folks? Is that dangerous from a chemical standpoint? And there was a study that was done in New York, and I just wanted to underscore when and if there were to be a battery fire, and these things are extremely rare. It's akin to a house fire, the, from the standpoint of the, what's in the air and what's giving off. So this study out of New York, the utilities there did, found that a smoldering lithium ion battery can be treated with the same precautions as something like a sofa, mattress, or office fire in terms of toxicity. So I think that's important. I know it's a new technology that not everyone's really familiar with, but keeping in mind that, you know, to the extent that we're worried about, you know, if there's a fire, it has the same type of, you know, issues as a house fire. And so it's, it's not something that's overly dramatic from that standpoint. And let me get to the, get to the point here. Just in summary, you know, we're replacing what we think is a dirty use that the neighborhood doesn't really like, and that's why there's no neighbors that have, have spoken out against this project with something clean, something quiet. We, we put the setbacks in our site plan that staff asked us to put in, and so we're hoping that we can get that approved. Fire department's in full support of those setbacks. And so to get to the point, we, we request a modification of stipulation D2. And this is the proposal that was in our application originally, in our, our site plan that's before you. As you heard from Joel, if we have the 500-foot setback, we can't do the project there. And so that's really the, you know, the crux. We appreciate staff's support for the project, but the 500 feet makes it unworkable. And so we'd like to move forward the way that we were told we could from the get-go. And if the, if, if you like, as a, as a condition, we're happy to include that language that you all put in place on a previous application. So I'm happy to have any, any questions answered. Some of the IPA team is both here and online. If there's any specifics that I can't answer, but I appreciate your time today and ask you to amend the, the stipulation D2 to, to put in place the setbacks that are part of our application. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. I do have a question for staff. So the 500-foot setback for, or boundary between a battery storage site and residential zoning, is that part of our zoning or is that just a recommend?
Mr. Chairman, and Joel can jump in whenever I go astray. But the, that zoning, there's nothing in our ordinance that addresses best setbacks for best. There are various standards that the different fire marshals like to see implemented. And that's one issue with being a county jurisdiction is rather than a single fire marshal like a municipality, we have a couple dozen. And so they may each have different issues that they look at. And they will look at the development at the building permit, construction permitting stage. But we try and address the zoning district development standards. The applicant indicated that they're far exceeding the standard. They are far exceeding the standard for an industrial side setback. But that, that standard doesn't apply to this site today because the site's not zoned for industrial. Today, they could not have a best with the zoning entitlement that they have. But what you need to decide is, is general industrial adjacent to the residential more appropriate than the existing community residential, which is most optimal? And you can take many aspects into consideration. What staff is saying is when we have, when we're considering industrial proximate to housing, we need to consider that we're now allowing uses that are, that aren't entitled before. Historically, we've had a number, in recent years, we've had a number of best projects, but they've tended to all be remote locations in our jurisdiction. So it's not been an issue or concern. We had one earlier this year that was somewhat proximate to housing, but it was demonstrated that they would meet 100-foot setbacks from all lot lines. That was for firefighter staging and refuge. And then that they were, they were more, there could never be housing within, closer than 500 feet. And that was adequate because it allowed the toxic plumes to dissipate high into the atmosphere. That's staff's concern in looking at this case. Is this site appropriate for general industrial? And if it's going to be a best, should we require specific zoning district standards for the best? And that's what staff has proposed. The applicant's proposing different setbacks. I don't know if they're specific to best, but just different setbacks. We should be aware that if they ever split lots, you know, if there's ever any subdivision of this property, that will impact their development because these standards will still apply. They're part of the zoning district. So this, this is looking at the zoning district as a whole rather than formalized. So, and I hope I haven't muddied the waters, but the, the fire agency with authority for this site has signed off, and they have a fire station within a couple blocks. Those are aspects to consider. You know, staff's concern is that, that we want to observe a minimum 100-foot setback from all lot lines for best. They're proposing a greater than 100-foot setback on the south, which is along, adjacent to the housing, and then lesser elsewhere. And you can take that into consideration. And if you're satisfied with the, with the separation from housing, or if that's not an issue, you know, give that weight. Obviously, the, the fire agency has signed off.
Okay, I was just trying to get to the bottom of where the 500-foot separation came from. And that's just the standard that you guys, that the county would typically.
We, yes, Mr. Chairman, we actually, we've started implementing that very recently based upon a different fire marshal's statement.
Okay.
And I believe it's consistent with, with best practices. You know, the applicant's providing information that the technology has further improved and that, you know, a best fire is akin to a household fire.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, can I, can I briefly just, just respond?
Sure.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. And I appreciate those comments. I, I just wanted to underscore, and if, if the county wants to go down the road of having a standard setback from residential, you know, I think that's, that's fair, but I think it should be told to applicants before they're. you know, I think that's, that's fair, but I think it should be told to applicants before they're, you know, in the process designing their, their facility and, and, you know, spending money and making accommodations in reliance on what staff previously said. And so I really respect staff here and, and certainly understand what they're talking about. But in, in light of the unique circumstances here, where we made the application with staff's knowledge, with the setbacks we proposed, got comments back from staff to adjust the setbacks. We made those adjustments and then only last week we're asked or told that there might be some new standard. You know, I, I guess I would submit that maybe there's a unique opportunity or unique circumstances here that the county can, uh, can look to, to this as, as maybe, you know, the last one that gets through this way. I don't know if that's right, but again, also just reiterating as, as Darren did. You know, we have the, the fire department in this jurisdiction has said that the, that the setbacks we proposed are okay. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. All right.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Yep.
I'll have other brief comments because most of the commissioners have already heard my other comments. But I have a, uh, two questions for the applicant while he's standing at the podium. The first is I just, first of all, he mentioned that we spoke last week, had a very nice conversation. They're doing all that they've, with the exception of this stipulation, but, um, they're, they're playing by the rules. But I had heard the other day and with his bringing up rural metro, I just heard two days ago, that, and he may or may not know the answer to this, but I had heard that rural metro is being sold. They only have three fire stations, so to speak, in the entire valley. And I guess the question is, is you aware of the rural metro is being sold? And obviously the follow-up question that is, if they're being sold, is this, is this station going to remain in place? Because they're always like, with my discussion with the, my experience with rural metro is they've always been understaffed. Then I have one more question, but are you aware of that? That rural metro is being sold?
Mr. Chairman.
And I don't know that that's relevant to this case, but I just was curious.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Slosser, I, I'm not aware of that and, and I do echo your comments. I don't know that that's, that's relevant. They have the obligation to serve this site. And typically in these sales, they maintain the same, um, you know, the same folks doing the same jobs. But I, I'm not, I don't know enough to, to talk about that.
Okay. And I didn't think you would, but the next question is you mentioned a fire hydrant within close proximity. Can you describe to the commission? I don't think it was part of your presentation. It's the, when first responders, if, if and when, and as my fellow commissioners have heard me say a lot of times now, it's not if, but it's a matter of when one of these things catches on fire. What's their standard protocol now? Can you describe what they do?
Yeah, I'm happy to, happy to describe that for you. First of all, there are fire hydrants that were requested within the site. So there's, there are several. Yeah, there are, there are several that were requested by staff and by the, the rural metro. And so those are located within the site. You know, the standard procedure, when, when and if, you know, if something were to occur is unlike in the past. The fire departments have been trained that they respond. And what they do is they just make sure that, that no heat or smoldering require or causes any fire to propagate or move beyond just a few cells that are typically impacted if something were to happen. And again, it is rare that something happens. If you think about it, we've got hundreds of thousands, actually millions of electric vehicles parking in people's garages every night, all over, not just here, but around the world. And, you know, those fires are exceedingly rare, but they, uh, the, the response from the fire department is to make sure that those don't spread. So often you'll see perhaps they pour water on adjacent areas to keep it cool and just make sure that nothing spreads. I think it's important to note that, uh, based on my research and, and talking to my client, there's no record of any, you know, non-emergency personnel being injured by a battery storage fire or having any injuries from a battery storage fire in the United States. And so I think that's really important to keep in mind. There's certainly, um, you know, some very, there's, there's a local example of old technology causing harm to firefighters. And that was a terrible incident, but that, this is not the same technology. And again, just reiterating that, that there's no, uh, no instance ever of, of harm to the public.
And I agree with that with the new technology, but I guess my point being if one does catch on fire, the, the hazmat teams that will be called by rural metro because they're not capable of, of, uh, putting these, that will be hazardous materials team will come out there. They just let it burn, correct?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Slosser, that's, that's correct. And, and I guess I would just know, you know, not only do I do land use and zoning, but I head up our renewable energy department. So I've spent a whole lot of time reading about and learning about and doing cases on behalf of battery energy storage providers. And so, you know, I've had cause to read, uh, you know, reports on some of the rare fire incidents. And one thing I would point out is that air quality sampling that's been done, uh, on more recent incidents have found that there's been no negative, uh, air quality implications with fire. Meaning, um, you know, those around, uh, around the sites are, you know, safely able to breathe and there's no toxicity or, or harm being caused. So I think that's important too.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have until, I'll have further comments, but that's all I have for the applicant for, for right now. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Slosser. Is there any other, anybody else in the commission that would like to speak? Wayne? Yeah, Mr. Pack.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, there seems to be some confusion. So I'd just like to lay out what you're doing here. You are creating a new zoning district. That's the application before you to create a specific zoning district for this piece of property. Okay? They have made a presentation about a site plan, but as far as I know, this isn't to approve a POD, is it?
No, I, my understanding is there will be a subsequent administrative POD approval.
Okay. So you cannot put stipulations on a zoning district. What you have to do is decide what are the appropriate standards? If you're going to create this particular zoning district on this piece of property. While council indicated they would agree to a stipulation where the fire department, in this case rural metro, would have final say, you cannot put such a stipulation in a zoning district. That would be delegating the county zoning authority to someone else, which cannot happen. So when Darren and Joel put together their recommendation, those are not conditions or stipulations. Those are suggested development standards for this particular zone. And I know CUPDs and IUPDs and RUPDs sometimes can be confusing, especially RUPDs, because the applicant often comes in with a specific plan that they're proposing, which could change. But I need the commission to understand you are writing a special zoning district for this particular piece of property. So all the things that Darren mentioned you would take into consideration, that's correct. But that goes into whatever standards you put in to the zoning district. And I'm happy to answer any questions because I know this stuff is kind of technical.
If, if I may add, uh, so the development standards proposed for the IUPD zoning district is in stipulation D, uh, particular D point two. And that is what the applicant wishes to modify from the staff recommendation. The fire agency does separate review at construction permitting. They will enforce what their standard is. They can't make it less than whatever zoning district standard you create, but they can make it greater.
So is there, is there an opportunity for planning and development when it goes through there for their fire? To say it needs to be, have a 500 foot distance between a battery storage and residential?
Yes, sir. We can certainly discuss that with the fire marshal. The fire marshal can require something in order to provide the fire service because they sign off on, uh, fire safety. We don't have a county fire code specific to private property.
Mr. Chairman.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Slosser.
I, I just wanted to, uh, make a comment and Darren hinted on it. I'm, I'm learning as I go here, but I've learned quite a bit and spent probably at least a hundred hours on this issue over, since we, the county approved, uh, I've, what, I forget the name of the project, but up at Happy Valley in El Mirage. So what Wayne was saying, uh, but Darren hinted on it. If we approve this new zoning that's being, that's being requested, what I learned with the phase one of that project up north was, and I want all the commissioners to understand this, we approved the zoning, forget the stipulations for a minute. What Darren hinted on was that once that zone, if we approve it today, the, the zoning, it goes to board of supervisors and correct me if I'm wrong Darren or Wayne, but goes to board of supervisors. The new zoning gets approved. And then at that point, the project gets administratively approved. There's no more public process from that point forward. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. That was my understanding. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I briefly respond?
Yes.
Thank you. So I, I just wanted to be clear. I, I don't think I disagree with anything that Mr. Pack told you. And I just want to be very clear. We are specifically asking that those development standards that are, are in D2 be modified so that at least the project that the applicant wants to build has the opportunity to go through the process with staff and actually get built. And so we're just asking that those numbers be modified to match. I mean, we're the ones asking for this, this unique zone change. And so we're asking that those setbacks be modified. I've got up on the screen what those numbers, what we'd like those to look like. And then we go through the process with staff, even without the other stipulation that we proposed. We go through that process with the fire department. And if they don't like it, we don't have a project. And so, um, we'd like the opportunity to move forward and, you know, hopefully be able to convince staff and continue to have the support of the fire department with a great project. But we need those changes to do it. So thank you.
Okay.
Chairman Hernandez, can I?
Yes, Vice Chair Limblom.
I recently was on a panel, um, talking about, and APS and SRP were on both sides of me. And we were talking about the future demands of generation needed in, in Phoenix. 40% increase or 50% increase by 2030, 2035. Like huge increases in, uh, the ability to generate and produce power for Arizona, for us to keep up with the demands. And part of that discussion was that as technologies improve, municipalities, government bodies are going to need to adapt to those technologies in order and do things differently than we've done in the past to be able to, uh, meet those needs. And as I look at this project, I think there was a time that maybe 2,000 feet might've been too, too, uh, too close to residential, uh, homes. But as technologies change, I think we need to as well. And I'm not an expert on this, but I, just as an overall, uh, public policy and as we look at these, these setbacks and those types of things, I think those are the things that we should be trying to balance is the need to, the need to meet our future energy needs, balance that against our, is this the proper land use within a neighboring, uh, whatever it is, whether it's residential, commercial or whatever, does this land use apply? But in this particular case, we're looking at where we're being asked to change from 500 feet to 173 feet. And I think that's the question here today is, is, are we comfortable with that? And I, I personally have not found a reason why 173 feet is not, um, is not, uh, reasonable, uh, for this project type. That's personally my opinion, but I'm also heavily weighing this, this balance of we will need to be more creative in the future to meet our, our energy needs as a, as, as a community. And so, um, that's just kind of where my head goes as I look at setbacks. I'm looking at what is the technologies, what is the harm to neighbors? If there isn't one, maybe what used to be 500 feet can be 173 feet now. Maybe eventually it'll be five feet. I don't know. But I think that what I'm worried is we start setting these standards as a whole zoning and we're not looking at what the actual project is. And I just don't want to get down a road where we, I'm just talking more, uh, big picture here in, in general. So it's kind of my thoughts.
Great. Thank you, Vice Chair Limblom. Okay. Um, we don't have anybody registered to speak today on this case in person. David, is there anybody online?
Sorry, can't get them. No, there's no one online who's expressed an interest in speaking.
Okay, great. So since we don't have any more public comments, um, we will close the, um, we'll close the public and, and discuss as a commission. Thank you very much for, thank you. Thank you. Okay. So I guess we have two items to talk about here. Number one is changing zoning from CUPD, from a C2 CUPD to industrial to IUPD. Number one, and then number two, if the commission is comfortable with changing the zoning, is adjusting the setback or adjusting the condition, was it D2? D2V from 500 feet to 173 feet. So those are the two items. No, Wayne?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, you are establishing the zoning district. If you do the IUPD, IUPD, you set those standards. It's not, should we change it? And then what would the standards be? You're creating a zoning district. So those are your two considerations, but it would be one item really that you're deciding.
So if we, as a commission, decide to adjust the zoning, so the condition here that says minimum from existing permitted residential use is 500 feet, does that hold or not?
What you would do is whoever makes the motion would say, I move that we approve IUPD two. Does it have a number on it?
It said the zoning is special to the IUPD. If I, if I could real quickly, and I apologize at this point to bring this up, but D point two point.
We can't hear what's being said?
I'm sorry. I did not have my speaker on. I, I think we want to be clear, uh, D point two lists setbacks, one, two, three, four. And then five is really not a setback, it's a separation. It's a, it's a different animal because it is, the setback are from lot lines. The separation is from another use. So I would like to just add the word separation on, in Roman numeral five. So it says minimum separation, uh, from residential dwelling units.
Okay.
And, and, uh, these are very specific setback numbers. In general, we like them to be a little bit more rounded. For one thing, it gives a little bit more, they're not locked in. If this is based upon as a very specific survey, well, they could be wrong if they come in with a different, diverse sized brick, for example, that can change your setback. And, uh, so perhaps they just want to make these, i- if you're considering their suggestions, 90, 71, 71, 70.
Okay. So back to what you were.
To answer the question, the motion would be to change the zoning to IU, to industrial to IUPD with the following standards. Any standard you don't specifically change, then the underlying IND2 standards would apply. So if you want to accept the applicant's, uh, setbacks, for instance, it would be, I move that we approve IUPD, IND2 IUPD with the following setbacks. And then with the following separation from residential. That would be the proper way to word the, uh, the motion. And I'm not sure Darren, you went really quickly. If everybody got the numbers, staff is recommending if you're going to accept what the applicant is looking for.
So I would, if you want to suggest what the applicant desires, I would suggest the motion include a revised condition D point two, uh, to say. uh, uh, item one, 90, item two, 90, item th, I'm sorry, item one, 90, item two, 70, item three, 170, item four, 100, item five to read minimum separation from existing permitted residential slot, in parentheses, dwelling units, 170.
So if we just make a, a motion to approve, as we usually do, uh, conditions A through H, that doesn't, that's not going to fly?
That.
But, okay.
I, I don't want to, I'm sorry, I don't want to confuse them. That would be the staff recommendation. If you want to consider, and, and that includes a 500-foot separation. If you want to consider their setbacks and separation.
So that's, but that's what I'm getting at. So if we approve this as it's written right now, then it's just going to be, just whatever the standard is for.
No, no.
Industrial two. Is it going to be for what you guys are?
It's for, it's, if you base it on the staff recommendation, the staff recommendation includes altered setbacks because of the IUPD overlay. So if you, if you just say subject to conditions A through H, it includes staff's recommended condition in the, in the staff report, which is an IUPD with development standards that include, uh, certain setbacks, 100-foot from all lot lines.
Okay.
And a 500-foot separation.
I would prefer that the wording be with the, uh, standards as outlined by staff in condition D, as opposed to subject to the conditions, because zoning can't be subject to conditions. No, I, i- if I'm making myself obscure.
I just want to make sure that we're, we're clear on that, so. Because I mean, I think this whole, I don't even think the site is 500 feet from north to south. So if that condition is put on there, then this project doesn't work at all. And so basically what we're doing is we are rezoning this from commercial to industrial. That's, that's what I'm trying to get.
That is correct.
So we can grant them the, the zoning change, but this project doesn't work. They can go in with something else that's an industrial use that fits any other guideline of industrial use.
That is correct, sir.
Okay. That's all I was trying to, that's how, I just wanted to make sure that I was clear and that the rest of the commission understood that, so. Um, so yeah, so we're here to change the zoning. Yes, Joel?
Chairman Hernandez, I do want to add that the rezone does limit the use just to, uh, what's in, um, uh, zoning law in section 902.2.17. So they couldn't come in for a different use beyond what is within that specific category. You'd have to come back in for another rezone to allow for separate uses.
One second.
Yep.
D point one, allowed uses, now 2.2.17. Right, but you're saying it limits uses? It's 17. What is 17?
I apologize for the delay. It's my opinion that there's some concerns, uh, they're limiting, their proposal limits the use to 902.2.17, which is public utility and generating plants, including sewage. I apologize for the.
Okay, thank you, Darren. Okay, um, so is there any, anybody from commission want to get this thing started?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner Schlosser?
Uh, first of all, I agree 100% with, with, with what, uh, Vice Chairman Limbom said, as far as future needs for alternative energy uses. The problem with this case and what this applicant is asking for, just like with the case up on Happy Valley in El Mirage, is the location. It's 57 yards from the nearest residence. We can have all the studies we want in the world, it's new tech, technology. And in my younger years, 57 yards, I could throw a football that far, to put it in a perspective. I probably couldn't, I'd throw my shoulder out nowadays. Uh, but it's just too close. And at some point, I just fear that something's going to happen. They have all these, these, uh, alarms and safety protocols and everything else. But, but, uh, it's just in good conscience. I just can't vote. If it, if we're next to a landfill like we've approved before, or next to vacant land, that's one thing. But this project is next to an existing subdivision with, with, uh, citizens living there. We actually, a few years ago, a, a, approved this same subdivision to the south. So I'd like to hear, uh, discussion from other members, but then it's in my district and the chairman's district, and I'd like to take the first stab at the motion. That's all I have.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner Schlosser. Um, Commissioner Montoya?
Yeah, you know, looking at the map, I, um, have some serious concerns about the proximity of that new development, um, that is so close to it. And, um, yeah, I know that we can't sort of take into account whether or not Valley Metro is being sold. But, um, if you look at all the residential areas immediately to, to this property, I, I just, I just can't support this. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner, uh, Montoya. Anybody else in the commission?
Chairman Hernandez?
Uh, yes, Commissioner Swart?
Yeah, thank you. I really appreciate both of my colleagues and their position on this. I'm, I'm in this space, as many of you know, and wide variety of different things. And I study these things in a, in a great degree. And I would tell you that my concerns are identical to both of my colleagues. I just, I, I will tell you that I want to always embrace good economic development, but really the most important thing is we have to protect our citizens and we have to protect our neighborhoods. And I will also mention that there's a lot of people in many, many industries that will tell you that they have technology and they have things that are invincible. And, uh, just like the Uber car that they said would never be able to harm anybody who killed a woman in Tempe, I was actually involved in that case. And I will tell you that, uh, I will not be supporting this case. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Swart. Is anybody else, any comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Uh, yes.
Darren, just to explain my, uh, my reset and pause a few minutes ago, D point one lists the, the uses that will be entitled with this IUPD zoning district. It's very specific to 902.2.17. And that speaks to, uh, generation facilities. It doesn't, it's silent to, uh, battery storage or storage facilities, power storage. However, I will go on record that staff interprets the power, the, the, the storage facility to fall under the umbrella of the generation facility. So, uh, where it says generation, we would also permit as a primary use, storage.
Okay, thank you, Darren. Um, all right, is anybody else?
Chairman Hernandez.
Yes, uh, Vice Chair Limbom?
I, um, I respect this board and I respect, um, the research that's been done. I have yet to really hear of an issue where one of these has caught on fire and hurt a resident nearby. And I really caution this body of taking this position moving forward, because we will not be able to meet the energy needs of our community if we do. We have got to make decisions based off facts and the, and what we know to be accurate. I was with a friend in Nashville this weekend, and she received a text that a battery storage facility had caught on fire near her home in California, and that they were terrified that the fumes were going to hurt everybody. And I texted her and said, how, what was the fallout there? Anyone harmed, anything damaged to the property? No, no harm. I just think we need to be more careful on when we make decisions, that we make them on facts. And so, um, I have not heard anything outside of that the fire department, who has to put this out, is very supportive. Um, I agree with, uh, Chairman Schlosser that I have seen Rural Metro sell in places, and the fire station is not there anymore. Um, so I, I don't think he's wrong on that, that that's a potential that could happen. However, I did reach out to Glendale on this case. They're aware of it. Um, they don't, there was no concerns that they raised. And so I just, um, I tend to be more supportive of this project for the reasons that I think we have to look at. We can't just be in fear all the time. We have to make some decisions based off of facts, and we also have to look at and try to find the right balance. And I feel like this is a proper land use. So that's just my opinion.
Great, thank you, uh, Vice Chair Limbom. I guess, uh, since nobody else is, I'll just give my two cents. I agree with, uh, Vice Chair Limbom. I also agree with, uh, um, Commissioner Schlosser. Um, we do have to, um, think about the future and our power generation needs. Uh, however, I, this is just a little too close, uh, for me. Uh, so I'm going to be, uh, opposed to this one. I have done a lot of research on this stuff as well, uh, talking with hazmat firefighters and stuff. And, you know, these things do catch fire when they do. They just let them burn, you know? So, um, yeah, that's all I got. Um, at this time, I guess we'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Schlosser?
I guess back to Vice, Vice Chair Limbom. I, I feel terrible, but again, it's just a close proximity of this thing. One thing the applicant did bring up is that, that none of these lithium ion batteries catch on fire. I don't remember which auto, not to get in the weeds here, but which, uh, battery operated auto manufacturer. But the third recommending that they park these, these electric cars outside now, because they catch on fire and then they catch the, the home on fire and they can't put them out. So, um, anyways, I'd like to make a motion. I can't, as I always say, can in good conscience do that. And it's only, I'm fully in favor of them, but they just have to be in the right location. This is not one, this is not one of them. So with that, I will make a motion to deny case fee 2024-012.
All right, we have a.
For me, it's location, location, location. Just not the right place.
Was that a second?
Yes.
Okay, so we have, uh, motion to recommend denial of case Z 2024-012 by Commissioner Schlosser, and we have a second by Commissioner Montoya. Are there any comments on the motion? Hearing none, Rosalie?
Commissioner Curly?
No.
Commissioner Lawrence?
No.
Commissioner Dan Zeison?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Point of clarification. Uh, can staff explain what a no and a yes vote is for my motion for denial?
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, a yes is for denial, a no is to not support denial.
Okay, thank you.
So you guys are, okay.
Commissioner Montoya? You're muted?
Uh, to deny this application? I vote yes to deny the application.
Commissioner Swart?
I vote yes.
Commissioner Schlosser?
Yes.
Vice Chair Limbom?
No.
Chairman Hernandez?
Yes.
Chairman, we have a motion recommending denial by a vote of five to two. I'm sorry, five to three.
All right, great. Um, thank you, Rosalie. Let's see here, my notes are way too fast.
Mr. Chairman, for, for the, for the benefit of anybody watching, the recommendation for denial proceeds to the Board of Supervisors, I believe that is, on 10/23.
Okay, great, thank you, Darren. Um, are there any other matters? Nope, no other matters, all right. We will, uh, adjourn this meeting at 10:36.